Student and school presentations, parent groups, open to the public, three minutes per speaker for no longer than 60 minutes. And I'd just like to note that at our last meeting, we moved to a process where everybody has the opportunity to speak for those three minutes. To make it fair to all, I have my stopwatch here on my phone, and at two minutes and 30 seconds, I'll let you know to wrap up your thought. We will not answer any questions while everyone's speaking, but once we've completed that session, we have taken notes and will answer as many questions as we can then. We will then have our superintendent's report, our correspondence and board comments, personnel agenda, consent agenda. We will not be having a second executive session. We will adjourn the meeting. There are a couple of corrections to the agenda that I'd like to point out. On the personnel agenda, page one, letter B, the effective date for the instructional resignation of Gary Sivak is incorrect. That date should be October 20th, 2014. Likewise, for letter C, the instructional leave of absence, the effective date there is 10/21/14 rather than 10/14. And then if you go to page two, letter F, appoint leave replacement teacher, that effective date is 10/21/14. Do we have a motion for previous minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes of the previous regular meeting held on Monday, August 25th, 2014. Second.
Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any student or school presentations time?
Hello. First off, I want to say thank you to the board and everyone here for giving us a second to talk. My name is Zach Duregorio. If you don't know, I know a lot of people say hello. I'm in 12th grade here at Beacon High School, and I'm also lead vice president of the National Honor Society. So, we have actually, as the National Honor Society, just begun the fifth annual food drive called Project Hope. We are collecting canned and non- perishable food items to replenish area food pantries. We work with the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, who organizes the project. Success of Project Hope has been due in no small part to the generosity of the Beacon City School District. We would like to thank the BTA this year for working in conjunction with us, and they're also going to help collect food, and we're going to put it together at the end for as much food as we can collect. The Board of Education has allowed us to place a collection box at their offices, and we would like permission to do that again this year. The National Honor Society will ask parents to donate a canned or food item at the high schools' meet the teacher night this Wednesday, or to donate a dollar for a "no child should go hungry" orange awareness ribbon. This year's Project Hope will continue until November 13th. So, we have these rubands for the board, and we ask you to please wear them to help raise awareness. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and let us get the word out to our community, and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
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 Do we have any parent groups tonight?
Hi. Hi, Dr. Long. Good to see you again. My name's Meredith Hoover. I'm the chair of the Beaconers and Aggie Foundation. I just, I mostly want to say hello. Happy new school year. We, here again, we're a very small board, but we're still hanging in there, ready to pump the Calva wall again this year. We're also going to do a mini teacher grant program, which we didn't do last year, but we've done in the past. This has supported musical instruments, field trips, teaching artists within the school, so I'm glad to see some new principals here because you're our messenger, so please let the teachers know that that will be available. And also, the biggest project that we've been working on and will continue to work on is working with the Bosse Coaster in Dutchess County, and that is something you will be receiving more information about, but it's a great thing. We've already saved a lot of money in the past few years, and we're hoping to grow awareness even more this year in high school and middle school, and expand programming in the arts and arts area even more. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, open to the public. Who would like to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashley Noder-Thomas, and I'm in 7th grade at the Ram Bell Middle School. I've been in the district for eight years, and I take around eight bus to school every day. My bus is packed full of kids, and every morning it is late to school, most days, for the past eight years. I must be at my first period class by 8:10, but my bus arrives either after the bell or two or three minutes before the leave bell rings, and I don't have time to go to my locker and get to my class on time. Last week, my class started a pre-test before I arrived late, and I had no idea what was going on, and I felt I was a disruption to the other children. I'm wondering if there is room in the budget to add a second bus to split rowdy, or make adjustments to the pickup times in the morning.
Okay. You have just one. Did you get the?
I did. I did get the information, so I, this is the first I'm hearing about it, so I will speak to Mr. Mackey tomorrow, and I will get in contact with you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming.
Okay. That means your report.
All right, my report. I'm going to share my report this evening with some of my colleagues who are here tonight, who are the administrative team, and we're going to be talking a little bit about the opening of school. And I'm going to say a few words, and then I'm going to ask them to come up and share some of their thoughts about the opening of school, because it's such a big day for us. And the administrative team works throughout the summer to make sure that everything's in place and ready to go, so I thank them, because it does get hot in those offices in the summer. And I also would like to thank the operations and maintenance people for making sure that the schools were ready to go, because Melissa and I had an opportunity to walk through the schools. I'm not going to, I don't know, you'll probably want to talk a little bit about that, so I'm not saying anything more. We opened school on the second for adults, for the teachers and our staff who came to two conference days, where we spent two days with professional development. There were presentations for our aides on autism, and also a special device that I believe turns speech to text. Is that correct? Quite an interesting piece of equipment. And we also had Gary Sivak-Silvera, who is sitting here in place of Mr. Lambert this evening, who gave us a great presentation on mandated reporting, and also on the general education teacher's role with the IEP document. And we also had a presentation on the EAP program, and we had building meetings, we had grade level and content area meetings, who in most cases, but not all in most cases, were sharing information about the Common Core projects that teachers worked on over the summer. And we even had time for a little bit of time in the classroom, as well as the building meetings that the principals were able to run. So, it was a busy first two days, but then we had the first day of school, and I would like to ask my right-hand people and left-hand to come forward and share some of their thoughts about opening of school. So, who would like to go first?
I'll go first.
Thank you.
I don't want John to go first. These sessions may be short. I think it's all in a single.
Good evening. My name is Cara Conrad. I'm the South Avenue principal, for those of you who have not met yet. I'm actually going to read Mr. Eric Wright from Forestal. He's going to be here. Celebrating birthday. So, I will read his opening first. He opened the school up with a total enrollment of 290 students. They have two teachers per grade level, and they are currently running their spectrum class that is grades two through four. The building looks very polished and ready to go. The custodial staff and maintenance crews worked really hard over the summer to prepare the building. There was new doors installed in their computer lab. The psychologist's room was painted, a new tile floor was installed. The teachers returned to clean classrooms, and the corridor floors were looking very well polished. Our gardening program is up and running through the Hudson Valley Seed, and has been expanded to include all K through two classes. We have additionally raised beds that have already been installed in the front of the school that the students will be working in. All four buildings had to meet the teacher night this last, this past Thursday. It went very well. They had well over 100 families in attendance. They went over procedures, protocols, and the curriculum this upcoming school year, and they also had their scholastic book fair to open up the school year. And currently, right now, the staff at Forestal and the PTSO are preparing for Spirit Beacon Day. So, now for South Avenue. At South Avenue, we opened up our building this year with approximately 380 students, and it's changing, my colleagues will tell you, it's changing daily. We're gaining students every day and losing. We're very transitional this year. I currently have three classroom teachers at each grade level, and we're welcoming a K inclusion class in our building and a kindergarten self-contained, which is very exciting, because the Special Ed program is going to continue in our building, and it's going to go from kindergarten to first and second grades. Those students are going to roll up with us, so we're very excited about that. We still have our morning pre-K and afternoon pre-K program. We currently, at the opening of every year, the last couple of years, we focused a lot on the safety in our building, and a couple of years ago, I changed the dismissal procedures. I have over 200 students that get signed out in our building, so we had to make sure that we tighten that up. And I'd like to openly thank all our families and our staff, because it's a daunting task to check IDs of all the adults coming into the building at the end of the day, but we definitely think it's paramount in order to secure the safety of our students, and it's been going very, very smoothly. We want to thank Mr. Mackey and Transportation for a smooth opening, even with little bumps in the road, like no phones working, they were very, very supportive, and were definitely getting a hold of us if anything came up. With on the safety note, we're working again in our building. Every year, we come in and we talk about what it is to be safe and appropriate as students in the building, so we're currently working on that with our PBIS program. I got to meet with every grade level at the beginning of the school year to review all this with them. And we also have expanded our farm-to-school program with the Hudson Valley Seed, and all our K through two students are also involved in it this year. And in the front of our building, if you drive by, you will see the raised garden beds that the students are starting to work up in as of this week. Our goal is eventually to grow the food and have it sustainable into within our cafeterias. We also had our back-to-school night Thursday. It was a success. I too had over 100 parents that were in attendance. I got to meet a lot of new faces, and I want to make sure that I thank our PTA and all our parents that were there and support that night. Our PTA puts out a wonderful spread for the teachers. It's a very long day for teachers, and every year, the parents and the PTA cook for us, so we're very, very grateful for that. So, we like to thank them, because I know some of them are here tonight. And I thank you to all the faculty and staff. We've had a great, smooth opening, and I'm looking forward to a great year. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening. Don Caddell, building principal at Glanum School. First of all, I have to say, this has probably been one of the most productive summers with the custodial staff. They really worked with no direction in regards to that. They used up all their time, they looked at where the gaps were, and they fixed things and painted things with really just initiative on their own. And we were able to get Tom Shetter from the bus garage to be able to come over and help us also, so we had a wonderful team. We started currently, our current enrollment is 467 students, but that keeps rolling, because the other day, I just got another five students registered in. Our largest class sizes are approximately 27 in grades second, fourth, and fifth grade, and we have three sections per grade level. On opening day, as we've been doing for the past 11 years at Glanum, we practice our GEMS program, which is our PBIS, and we have common lesson plans that we've developed and follow, which promotes common practice and language amongst all the adults in the building. We look at recess, lunch hallway, bathroom, homework attendance, and tardy. A big shout-out to Ron Mackey and the following bus drivers, Deb, Sean, Karen, Dean, Shamika, and our bus monitor, Cynthia. They come on that day, and they sit with the teachers on the bus and go through basic lesson plans for bus safety, and we do a school-wide bus drill, so all the students, regardless that they are students or not, understand how to exit a bus safely. Kindergarten conducted their meet and greet the day before school started. I believe this happened in all of the four elementary buildings at one level or another. We've been doing this for a couple of years, and we find that the students familiarize themselves, and the parents familiarize themselves, the location of the building, the classroom, and their environment, and so the official opening of the day really fosters a sense of security when they walk in, and there's really no crying or hesitation to come to school. This year, we continue to have a fortunate opportunity to work with the members of the RSE Task Team. At a faculty meeting in September, we continued our work on examining practices around explicit direct instruction. A lot of our expectations in faculty meetings and grade level meetings will be based on this data. Also, we conduct ademies, myself with the teachers. Every six to eight weeks, we review trend data and foster professional discussion regarding how data will drive our instruction. Meet the Teacher Night was a huge success. I usually go on a staggered schedule, because at Glanum, somehow, we always end up with a large load of twins and triplets, and also with the parking, I have to stagger it, but we were pretty packed. Drills, we currently have completed four of our 12 fire drills. I've had one general ed teacher run a fire drill with my presence. Normally, I'll have four general ed teachers coming in and helping me with the fire drills in the event that I'm not there. Our outside agencies, we are working with Book Buddies. We also are partnering with Hudson Valley Seeds as my colleagues, and our Renegade Reader Program. Fire Prevention Day this year, Fire Prevention Day is a big day at Glanum School, but this year, Slater Fire Company is celebrating their 50th anniversary, and so we will be celebrating on that on October 10th. And through the efforts of Slater Fire Company in Glanum School, we're looking at trying to fundraise enough money so that every adult and student has a Fire Prevention Day shirt this year. So, go to Slater Palooza, coming up soon. So, I will talk to you as the pre-K director. Classroom visits were available for all pre-K students and their parents in all four elementary schools on September 4th and 5th. We purchased a new diagnostic tool for pre-K teachers this year, and the Teaching Strategies goal is an ongoing assessment that will measure knowledge, skill, and behavior throughout an ongoing assessment during the course of the year. Members of the pre-K staff worked on the Common Core curriculum this summer and developed common units of study and curriculum calendars. I will be meeting with the pre-K team every month, and I will be going and visiting their classrooms in the next couple of weeks. We have some open enrollment spaces in the following schools, Forestal, Sargent, and South Avenue, and our CBO is Rose Hill Manor, and we need to maintain at least 10% of our enrollment in a CBO. And currently, right now, at Rose Hill Manor, we have two spots available. They were all filled, but there may be two families leave, so we're looking to fill that in. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Good evening. Brian Archer, Sargent Elementary. First off, I'd like to thank the Board of Education and the Sargent community for the privilege and opportunity to be the principal. I'm enjoying it very much, and learning a great deal as well. We've had a very good opening prior to the start of the school year. We had a team of teachers come in. We had a very interesting meeting where we began the conversation of talking about the vision for Sargent Elementary, and what that means for the community at Sargent Elementary. Very engaging work. It's important that we start with what we hold important and value, and one of the big goals that we value is a revival of the PBIS at Sargent Elementary. First week, we had our first school-wide assembly, where we had all 383 students go to the auditorium, and we had a big screaming match. It was a lot of fun. Probably the largest concern that I had going to the elementary level was dismissal. We didn't lose any kids on the bus. That was very good. I am most impressed by the parents, the teachers, the kids at Sargent Elementary. One of the big values that Sargent Elementary has is the idea of family, and I certainly want to grow that concept and make it even better. At the start of the school year, we were at 383 students. Last year was about 380 at this time. We have two teams of teachers at each grade level. A large population of the 383 students are special education students, very good teachers in most programs. I'd like to highlight some of the physical changes to Sargent Elementary. The basketball court was resurfaced. Kids love that. The PTO has paid for and installed four new pieces of equipment for the playground. If you get a chance, stop by, use that equipment. It's a lot of fun. And goals for the school year, to reiterate some of the same things that Ben said, we're working on how to use data to improve instruction. We're working hard as a staff on explicit instruction. Again, the PBIS work of common language definitions, celebrations, and the idea of ongoing improvement is something we're working real hard on, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Brian Saltish, principal of the middle school. Thank you all for allowing me to be here this evening. I have the pleasure of going before Dr. Sheberin, and I will introduce him when I'm finished. We've had a great start to our school year. The biggest news we've shared multiple times, it's worth sharing again, we are no longer a focus school, so that brought a great cheer by our staff, and we look forward to working hard to remain at that status. Our enrollment is up from last year. We're at a total of 696 students, which is about 20 to 30 students larger. Custodial staff did an excellent job, including a project they plan to do each year, which is try to paint five classrooms each year, which is going to give a nice touch to the building, and they're going to schedule that so that all the rooms get painted. It's a very nice thing that they did. Our open house went great. Would like to thank all the parents for the turnout. It was outstanding. It was not 95 degrees like it was last year, so it was an enjoyable evening for all. Our sixth-grade students seem to be doing well. They are now finding their way around the building. Their lockers are opening on their own without us peeling them open, so they are doing a nice job acclimating themselves to the middle school. They seem to enjoy the freedoms of being in sixth grade. The questions, they're starting to die down about, do they have to check out with us before they leave the building at the end of the day? So, they are enjoying their new freedoms. We are piloting a new program at the middle school. We are the first school, I believe in the district, to do that. I could be wrong. It's a grab-and-go breakfast program, so we are encouraging our students in the morning, no matter what time they get to school. If they get to school close to the start of first period, they can still go into our cafeteria and get their breakfast to go and bring it to their first-period class and eat the first few minutes of the period, and then throw the garbage out. So, we're trying to increase the numbers of students that are taking advantage of our breakfast program. That's for all students. Another change that the students are happy about, we are no longer telling them when they can and cannot go to their lockers. We are allowing them to go to their lockers when it is appropriate for them in between periods, so they don't have to carry books from the top of the building down to the gym and back. They can stop at their locker during the four minutes of passing time, as long as they're on time for their class. So, with that, we're hoping to increase their responsibility and decision-making. We're excited with the new sixth-grade class that we're offering this year. It came at the last minute, but we are now offering technology as an elective to our sixth-grade students, which we are very excited about, and I heard excellent reviews at open house from the parents about what they were hearing at those sessions. Lastly, our PTO is having their first meeting on Thursday of this week, the 18th, at 6:30 in the Ram Bell Middle School library. You're more than welcome to come. If you can't make the meeting, they are still looking for volunteers to go to West Point and serve hot dogs, soda, and everything else to the football fans. So, I would like to thank everyone. The school year is going great, and at this time, we will conclude the show with Dr. Sheberin.
Thank you. Will Rock.
No respect for their elders. I was banished last because they tell me I talk too much, so you know, I'm very brief. We opened up this year with 930 students. They're pretty much evenly distributed throughout all the grade levels, senior class being the largest at 244. What we have been noticing, like the other schools, it's almost like the estuary in the Hudson River, the flow in and the flow out. Now, it keeps coming in again, so I would assume we've been registering quite a bit of students in the last week or so, but we're roughly staying around 930 at this point. I want to also acknowledge, you know, our summer staff, the custodial, clerical, and counselors for getting this building ready, not only the physical plant, but also, you know, all the work that was done behind the scenes with the schedule, and also, you know, with the hiring process. With respect to the hiring, we are still waiting for the arrival of, you know, some key positions. One, obviously, our new assistant principal, whom you met at the last board meeting, simply because they had to, they can hold people for 30 days until they find a replacement for that position, so hopefully, around the first week in October, I would hope to have Ashley Jackson come on board. So, right now, it's Mr. O'Neill and I that are, you know, covering in that regard, but on that note, I have to tell you that the students have been very upbeat. For example, you just heard Zach before from the National Honor Society. We're starting our clubs. They're going to be beginning their food drive, so I'm really happy about that. We're currently doing the orientation. We've already, 9th and 10th grade, we did today. Tomorrow, with the 11th and 12th graders, we did also, also had orientation for the 9th grade early before we open up in September. Our open house will be Wednesday night of this week, so we expect a large turnout, and our first PTSO meeting will be Thursday evening here in the library at the high school. A number of things, very briefly. The schedule, we're in the process, we did some fine-tuning very early. with the hiring process. With respect to the hiring, we are still waiting for the arrival of, you know, some key positions. One, obviously, our new assistant principal, whom you met at the last board meeting, simply because they had to, they can hold people for 30 days until they find a replacement for that position. So hopefully, around the first week in October, I would hope to have Ashley Jackson come on board. So right now, it's Mr. O'Neill and I that are, you know, covering in that regard. But on that note, I have to tell you that the students have been very upbeat. For example, you just heard Zach before from the National Honor Society. We're starting our clubs. They're going to be beginning their food drive, so I'm really happy about that. We're currently doing the orientation. We've already, ninth and 10th grade, we did today. Tomorrow would be 11th and 12th graders. We did also, also had orientation for the ninth grader early before we open up in September. Our open house will be on Sunday of this week, so we expect a large turnout. And our first PTS home meeting will be Thursday evening here in the library at the high school. A number of things, very briefly. The schedule, we're in, we're in the process, we did some fine tuning very early on. Everything is all set right now. Thing that I want to mention also is that we now have the NovaNet offering for all four major subject areas during the regular scheduled. So we have it in English, math, social studies, and science, which is a big plus. Last Friday, we had Mr. England here from the Bosse's RSE task team, and that is an evaluation and collect data for the entire range of delivery for special education students from, you know, all the way from self-contained classes to general ed classes. And he collected data here to see where we can improve our special ed services for our students. So that was completed last Friday. Other than that, I'm happy with how the year began. And I'm keeping to my word that I'm going to be these notions behind me as far as lean and weight. Thank you.
Thank you. Erica Frank?
The fall sports began August 18th, so the kids have been at it for about a month now. We're in about the third week of contests at the high school level. Things are going well. We had a lot of last-minute hires, as you know, and those teams are doing well. I was concerned about a few of them, participation levels, because they started so late. Most high school kids, our teams begin sometime at the beginning of August. Informally, indeed, they only had a week to prepare, and participation was great. In fact, in volleyball, we probably had the most kids try out for that sport in a long time, so I was really pleased about that. And our two cheerleading coaches are doing a nice job, although the turnout wasn't that great. I expect some good things. In fact, the cheerleading, varsity cheerleading coach was practicing up at Spacken Hill, and the AD, Peter, paid a coach a nice compliment two weeks ago. The first week of sports was exciting. It was exciting with football. We had to do a little bit of maneuvering with varsity football. It was supposed to be a home game, and then it was at Arlington. And then because of the heat index at 98, the AD from Spacken Hill, I decided to move the game to early in the morning on Saturday morning to beat the heat. Otherwise, we would have not been able to play that game, and that worked out well. Then we won the game. Modified sports, up and running. Most of the cuts or the teams have been established. Today was the last one. Boys soccer made their final cuts to establish their teams. Probably in another week and a half, they'll start their games. Homecoming, October 18th. And the Hall of Fame, I would suggest that you all go to that. It's a very exciting time here in Beacon. A lot of kids, a lot of participation, a lot of community members. And the 1994 reunion is at weekend, and they will be there in force to be at the game. We started, first week of school, I had a general coaches' meeting like I always do. Every coach, fall, winter, and spring, we meet here in the evening with all the rules, regulations, procedures, and initiate Dr. Walkley and Marie were both in attendance. So we started off the year well. I'm excited. I'm about to fall, come out and see some of the games. If you go on our website, click on Athletics, click on Schedules, and you'll get the most up-to-date schedule. And there's a cancellation. My secretary, Lisa, who was fabulous, makes that change, so it's live. Thank you.
As Frank is coming up, I'll just mention that on Friday, I did get to see part of the girls' tennis match, and they won. And so far, they're 3-2. And I also saw the girls' volleyball game, and it was a really close game, very exciting. So if you want to see something exciting, get out and see the girls. Nothing against the boys. I haven't seen them yet. And they also won their game.
Good evening. As a pupil personnel department, the most important word in the PPS department service. So during the summer, Mrs. Triasi and myself, as the Director and Assistant Director, spend our time making sure that the IEPs and 504 plans are prepared and ready to start the fall. And it really gets turned over to this wonderful group that just stood up and spoke about how they start at school, incorporating students with disabilities and programs and classrooms therein as well. And they've done a great job with that. And then we get to watch them work on the first day or two of school. But I happen to have the luxury this year of spending the first day and a half shadowing one student, serving as their aide right here in the high school, which is an amazing view of what we provide for our kids. And I told Dr. Sheberding how impressed I was with some of the classes I went into that I wouldn't normally be in, because this student had some general ed classes too. So some of the information I learned is being shared so that we make sure that what we say we're going to provide to kids is provided in the way that we say we're going to provide it. So we'll be working on that throughout the year. The other thing I want to do is thank the Board and Dr. Walkley, because at this very podium in May, a woman stood up who was one of our aides, who was also a parent to a student with a disability, and said, hey, you guys provide professional development for teachers and teaching assistants, but never for aides. So this year, thanks to everyone here, permission was granted and resources provided so that all of our aides could get trained. They had a session given by Dr. Adrian Meyer from the Center for Spectrum Services on working with children with developmental disabilities and autism. They were able to attend the session with Mr. Winston Long and cultural competence. And we had, of course, some of the aides actually joined us in training on the software that you were referring to, which is Read and Write for Google, which is a speech-to-text and text-to-speech program for challenged readers to, for students with disabilities and 504 plans to have access to. So I think the beginning was great. I think these people did a wonderful job. And I wanted to thank you all for that opportunity. And the aides, I've heard from many of them thanking us for that. The other thing I want to mention is that the special ed portion of our work will be focused on working on a local assistance plan, known as a LAB plan, with Mr. Archer at Sargent School. We'll be presenting to the Board sometime in November, the final plan, after we pass it through Dr. Walkley. And we'll also be working with the middle school and high school on their quality improvement plan that Dr. Sheberding referred to. All in all, though, I thought it was an exhausting, but a very good opening to school. Thank you.
So, that's it. Do we have any board comments tonight?
I would just like to thank the administrators for having a good send-off at the beginning of the year. I think it's going to be a positive year. I would also like hearing Ashley and Zach speak tonight for the Board to discuss maybe adding a member to the Board, a student member, that could facilitate in reporting out on functioning events that are happening in the district, not only at the high school, even though it may be a high school student. But we could clearly outline the roles and expectations for that student member if we decide to go with it. It was just nice looking at the faces when the kids were speaking. Everybody was smiling.
I attended the Dutch County School Board Association meeting. It was a week and a half ago. It was sort of the organizational meeting for the start of the school year. One of the things we discussed is right at the moment, it's an interim Director of that organization. It's one of, one of the school board members from Arlington is actually serving that role on an interim basis. So one of the things we talked about is getting a full-time, well, I shouldn't say full-time, but a part-time person to take on that, on that role. And we'll be advertising that and going out and looking for somebody who can take on that role of the Director of the Dutch County School Board Association. So looking for somebody who has a background in education and understands how public schools operate and understands a little bit about the complexities of public school education, school law, and all those sort of things, and has good organizational skills. We also talked about the agendas for the upcoming meetings. Typically, every meeting, there is a presentation on some subject that supports the school board, so we kind of have those laid out for the rest of the year. So as, as we get closer to the next meetings, I will let my fellow board members know in case anybody wants to share a card right up there with me.
I just wanted to thank all the administrators for the great invitations this evening. I definitely have to give a shout-out to Ramble, because that's where my son goes. It was a pleasure walking through the building. It was even more pleasurable to see Dr. Walkley standing in front of the main office, you know, showing camaraderie, so that was greatly appreciated. Kudos to Ashley. I'm sorry that she left, but I think that it takes the leader to come in front of, you know, the community to present your issues and, and be heard. And so more children should be like her. So kudos to her on that.
I would just like to recognize that each of our new board members have now completed their board member training, so that they are now bona fide members of the Board. I had a great opening to the school year. I was able to be there on opening day to greet the teachers and welcome them back to the year. And then my favorite part of being on the Board was I was able, on the opening day of school, to go to each of the buildings with Dr. Walkley and welcome all the children back to the buildings. And that's probably my favorite, favorite activity I do within the year, is to see all those smiling faces in their nice new little outfits and, and ready to go. Like everyone else, I've attended some ballgames and really excited to see our football team with another win this weekend. And it's just great to see our children out and about, you know, to see those cross-country runners way out in Glenham, and to see our soccer players working hard. You know, it's just great. It shows this community is, is, you know, a great place. You know, our parks are beautiful, our district is beautiful. To see all of our kids, bless you, outside and enjoying the parks is a great feeling for me anyway.
Okay. May I have a motion for personnel agenda?
Motion to approve the personnel agenda, items A through L as attached.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
May I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent agenda, consent agenda, items 12.02 through 12.07.
Second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.